Good afternoon and welcome to today's public hearing. This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of Columbus City Council and Chair of these committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. This afternoon's hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. Again, this includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and to provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be occasions on which a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on city council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in Health and Human Services and the Finance Committees. The legislation covered will be on the council's agenda either May 2nd or May 9th. The speakers presenting this afternoon include the Department of Finance Fiscal Manager, Christopher Long, the Treasurer's Office, the City Treasurer, Ms. Deborah Clea, and Columbus Public Health, the Assistant Health Commissioner and Medical Director, Dr. Mashika Roberts. I will begin with legislation and finance, and I will ask, first of all, the City Treasurer, Debbie Clea, to present her legislation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Tyson. This afternoon, I have two pieces of legislation to present, the first of which is Ordinance 1177-2016, which is the Treasurer's Office renewal of banking legislation for the fourth year of a 10-year contract. The legislation covers all of the city treasurer's banking activities, the investment safekeeping, the water lockbox, the tax lockboxes, tax ACH accounts, the city's payroll account, operating account, and the lion's share of the funding in this ordinance comes from the credit card processing. The Treasurer's Office has contracts with Fifth Third for its investment safekeeping, Huntington Bank for its lockboxes and credit card business, and JP Morgan Chase for the city treasurer's operating account. This ordinance is for $2,260,000, and it is primarily credit card processing. That, on behalf of agencies as varied as income tax, police, or I should say, public safety, the Finance and Management Department, Building and Zoning, the Health Department, Human Resources, Recreation and Parks, Public Service and Utilities comprises -- one moment, please -- comprises $1,990,000 of the $2,260,000. All of these contracts were put out to bid in 2012 and were awarded in 2013. If you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them.
No, Treasurer Clea, I know that, remember when we put these out for bid? I know you worked really hard, you and your office, to get the proposal ready, and these -- this particular legislation, again, is, again, in 2012, you put this out for a request for proposal, and the contracts were for a period of 10 years, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then each year, we just come back for the annual appropriations?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you again for $2.2 million, $2.2 million, $600,000 for the various banking services. Thank you so very much.
Okay, my second ordinance is 1186-2016, and this one is for armored car services on behalf of the city. The Treasurer's Office brings deposits in from the points of location throughout the city, and we did go out to bid for this back in 2013. Brink's was our only respondent. We have offered this contract and the use of it to the Municipal Clerk's Office as well, and this ordinance is asking for renewal of the fourth year of, let me see, third year of four renewal options. So it's the fourth year of the contract. It was originally for one year, and it was, it included the possibility of renewal for four one-year options. This is the third of those, and the total amount under this contract is $62,000. It will cover pickups of cash at the Municipal Clerk's Office, Building and Zoning, Recreation and Parks, Public Service, and Utilities.
Thank you very much, and certainly I hope that my council colleagues will support this legislation either May 2nd or May 9th, and with Ordinance 1186 for, again, the amount of $62,000 for the safekeeping of our dollars. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presenter will be Mr. Christopher Long. Christopher, the floor is yours.
Hello, President Pro Tem Tyson. We have 17 ordinances that we anticipate will be on the next two council agendas. Our first is Ordinance 0515, and this ordinance, we anticipate, will be on the May 2nd agenda. And this is simply requesting through our Real Estate Management Office the authority to execute a Second Amendment to an existing farm lease agreement. This would be for undeveloped city property that resides in Delaware County. The prior tenant requested not to continue with the lease as a tenant, but our Real Estate Management Office identified another tenant that was interested in farming that particular land, and so this is just a request to amend that, to update it for a new tenant.
And this legislation has 89 tillable acres, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Our second ordinance is Ordinance 0781. We anticipate this would be on the May 9th City Council Agenda, and this is simply seeking authority to do a fund transfer from the Fleet Management Capital Fund to the Clean Cities Grant Fund. Basically through an annual grant reconciliation, we determined that the city needed to match an additional $19,151.88 to this particular grant. The grant was used to purchase compressed natural gas equipment and vehicles for our Fleet Management Department, and this was just a grant match requirement that we needed to make to close out the grant.
Thank you. We've certainly had some, I think, great success with our CNG operations and also the vehicles, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Our next ordinance is Ordinance 0833, and we anticipate this ordinance will be on the May 9th City Council Agenda, and this is a request by our Purchasing Office to establish a universal term contract for crime lab supplies with a vendor by the name of Kajogen Crime Lab Supplies. And we are requesting this as a sole source ordinance. It was determined by our Purchasing Office in cooperation with the Division of Police that this is the only entity capable of providing the necessary specialized crime lab supplies.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance --
And these supplies are for DNA testing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That is, it's very important that the crime lab has those, the products for this because we want to make sure that we're able to identify people who either have been involved in a crime and to be able to have that perpetrator brought to justice if that's the case, or else find people that have, it's just so important for our safety forces to have our new crime lab, and we need these supplies. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Our next ordinance, Ordinance 0834-2016, also, we anticipate, being on the May 9th Agenda, is very similar to our last ordinance. This is a request to establish a universal term contract with Promega, once again, for specialized crime lab supplies for our Division of Police, and we're requesting sole source on this particular ordinance as well.
Thank you, and the amount for the previous ordinance was $70,000, and this ordinance is $80,000.
That is correct.
Thank you.
0971-2016 is the next ordinance. We anticipate this as a second reading for the May 2nd City Council Agenda. This is a request by our Fleet Management Division to renew a contract with AssetWorks. AssetWorks essentially provides their proprietary enterprise fleet management system, so it tracks all of fleet's vehicle repairs, vehicle purchases and upfitting, vehicle fueling. So it essentially tracks all of the work that they do on all of our city vehicles. We are requesting a sole source renewal on this, as AssetWorks has been their proprietary system for almost the last 10 years.
This also has our GPS database, is that right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and this contract is for $742,000?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1031-2016 is next, and we anticipate this being on the May 2nd Agenda. This is another request for amending an existing farm lease. Essentially, the Department of Public Utilities has a construction project planned at their southerly wastewater treatment plant, and they're going to require the use of an additional 16 and 1/2 tillable acres. So this is a request through our Real Estate Management Office to amend the lease to essentially reduce it by the 16 and 1/2 acres so that our Public Utilities Department can move forward with their project.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1055-2016 is next. Anticipate that for the May 2nd Agenda, and this is a request by our Purchasing Office to establish a universal term contract for vehicle supplies and upfitting. So it's essentially when we go through our annual vehicle purchases, this would allow, especially public safety vehicles, to be upfit with light bars and dash cams and other needed pieces and parts that don't come with the vehicle, and we purchase them from the manufacturer. And it was a competitively bid contract through our Purchasing Office, and they're requesting an award to par public safety.
All right, so 34 vendors were solicited and one bid was received for this, and the estimated annual expenditure is $1.2 million.
That is correct.
Correct. Thank you.
The next ordinance is Ordinance 1056-2016 that we anticipate for the May 2nd Agenda. This is a request by our Purchasing Office, once again, to establish a universal term contract with David Fravel for the purchase and delivery of hay. And once again, this was a competitively bid contract, and David Fravel was deemed the most responsive and responsible.
This is for, because it has a capital H, hay, regular?
Yes.
HAY?
HAY, yes.
All right, and it's for $19,500? Oh, and it's going to be used for the Division of Police, their mallet unit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I left that out. Our next ordinance is Ordinance 1058-2016. This would be, we believe, on the May 2nd Agenda, and this is a request to seek council authority to sell some existing city property. It's actually the former site of the COAA or Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging that we relocated to 3776 South High Street. So this is a request to allow us to sell that property.
So this property, we put this out for bid, and only one response came back, is that correct?
That is correct.
And this contract will be going to Continental?
Correct, Continental Garage, yes.
And the amount that we will be receiving for this property is $2.7 million?
That is correct.
And this property is going to be used for 650 parking garage?
Yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you.
The next ordinance is 1122-2016 that we anticipate will be on the May 9th Agenda. This is seeking authority to establish five universal term contracts for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning parts, as well as HVAC filters, largely on behalf of our Facilities Management Division will use these probably the most. And it is seeking a waiver of competitive bidding. It was competitively bid, there was only one respondent, and that was Kelly and Askew, and the reason for the waiver request is they did not supply a manufacturer's catalog with the bid, which was part of the bid request, but since they were the only respondent, the Purchasing Office reached out to them, and they did agree to supply parts for all four manufacturers that the city currently uses, and so the Purchasing Office is asking for the ability to award to that particular vendor.
Okay, all right, and so there were 98 bids, 98 solicits, six were received, and the heating, ventilation, conditioning parts, and this is awarded to the Columbus Climate Controls?
Correct.
Because they were the, they were the overall lowest and most responsible bidder, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. I'm just looking, because I don't see what the other amounts that they, the individuals, the other amounts that came in for the other six, but, so, but the $250,000 was the lowest?
The $250,000 was our, is our anticipated annual expenditure from all of the respondents, so it would be Columbus Climate, Allied, Progress Supply, Tri-Dim, and American Air Filter.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1123-2016 is our next ordinance, and we anticipate that being on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This is a request by our Purchasing Office to establish a universal term contract for document destruction, and the Purchasing Office did solicit competitive bids. Two bids were received, and Briargate Realty Incorporated was deemed the lowest and most responsive bidder.
And this is for $30,000?
That's correct.
Okay, to destroy our paper documents. Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 1125-2016 is next. Anticipate this being on the May 9th Agenda. This seeks authority to establish a universal term contract for the option to purchase overhead door parts, and it would be from an entity by the name of Kelly and Askew. This was competitively bid through our Purchasing Office, and one bid was received, and this is the situation where Kelly and Askew submitted all required bid documents except for the manufacturer catalog, and so our Purchasing Office reached out to them directly and asked if they would be willing to supply all the pieces and parts requested in the bid documents, and they responded yes. Since they were the only bidder, the Purchasing Office was asking authority to award to that particular entity.
All right, and this is for $40,000?
That's correct.
Overhead door parts. Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 1134-2016 is next, and we anticipate this being on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This is a request by our Fleet Management Division for the authority to establish purchase orders from a previously established universal term contract to be able to upfit vehicles that we purchased this year, largely on behalf of the Public Safety Department. So it would be cruisers and some fire vehicles.
Looking, because we certainly just had another ordinance for par. Ordinance 1055 was also for par public safety equipment, correct?
That is correct.
For $1.2 million, and then now we have this ordinance that's going to authorize those dollars to go there for $1,040,010.22?
Yes.
Okay, for electronics, lights, and the push bumpers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1136-2016 is next. We anticipate this being on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This is simply a request to renew an existing contract with SA Communal for annual smoke and fire alarm testing that is conducted by our Facilities Management Division. It was competitively bid, and this would be the second of four annual renewals provided for under the original bid.
This is for annual smoke, fire alarm testing, inspection, repair, and sprinkler inspections, and fire pump testings, and fire suppression for our city-owned facilities, and it's for $190,000?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Ordinance 1138-2016 is our next ordinance, and we anticipate this being on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This is also a contract renewal, but with mid-Ohio air conditioning for preventive maintenance and service on various chillers, and it was competitively bid as well.
Thank you. This is for $50,000. I'm excited that we certainly have this preventive maintenance. I know that we want to make sure that when we have to buy a new chiller, that we have it in the, have it in the capital budget and are planning, and planning for that. I know we just had to buy a chiller for the Health Department, and so we want to make sure that we are looking forward and anticipating when we have to buy the chillers for our buildings, so. All right, so this is for $50,000. Thank you.
Ordinance 1148-2016 is next, and we anticipate this being on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This is seeking authority by the Finance Management Director to establish purchase orders with vendors from previously established universal term contracts for tire retreading services and the purchase of compressed natural gas by our Fleet Management Division.
All right, thank you, and we've budgeted $1 million for these automotive services in 2016.
That is correct.
And we're looking at $100,000 for US Venture, which is with the, is part of the $735,000 for compressed natural gas, and then the $150,000 for the treadway services.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Our last ordinance is Ordinance 1189-2016. We anticipate this being on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This is a request to authorize the Finance Management Director to enter into a contract with Farber Corporation for air conditioning upgrades at Fire Station 22 and Fire Station 25. It was a competitively bid construction and renovation contract, and Farber was deemed the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
All right, and so these air conditioning upgrades will be at, it's at Fire Station 22, which is at 3069 Parsons Avenue, and Fire Station 25, which is 739 West 3rd Avenue, and the contract's for $88,400.
That is correct.
That's correct. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next presenter will provide legislation from the Department of the Health Department, and it is Dr. Health, Assistant Health Commissioner and Medical Director, Dr. Mashika Roberts. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Tyson, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share some of our legislation that will be up in front of City Council in the coming weeks. We have eight items to present to you this afternoon, and the first one is to authorize various United Health Foundation grant contracts. This is ordinance number 0860-2016. Columbus Public Health was awarded a grant from United Health Foundation to fund the Celebrate One Community Connector Corps project. In 2015, Columbus and Franklin County had 146 babies that died before they reached their first birthday. Of those 146, 19 of those babies died because of sleep-related issues. In January of 2016 alone, 15 babies died, and of those 15, three were sleep-related infant deaths, and means they died in an unsafe sleep environment for babies of their age. These funds and this legislation will help us try to reduce the number of sleep-related infant deaths. This project helps support a citywide resident engagement program to connect pregnant women to medical and social supports in their neighborhood. The grant funds awarded provide it for multiple contracts for the period of February 1st, 2016, through January 31st of 2017, with neighborhood not-for-profit community organizations to meet the grant deliverables in the amount not to exceed $167,255.36. These are going to three nonprofits. They are Community Development for All People, who will get $46,318.34; Somali Can, which will get $44,752.2; and St. Stevens Community House, which will get $76,185, for the total of $167,255.36.
Dr. Roberts, could you share with the listing and viewing community as to why we have, why this grant is focused on those three nonprofit organizations, please?
Yes, because we are focused on three areas within the city of Columbus that have the highest rate of infant deaths, and specifically the highest rate of sleep-related deaths. And so those areas would be the Linden area, which has a very high rate of infant mortality, and then the south side, and that's where we see the Community Development for All People, and then the northeast side is where we see Somali Can. So we pick nonprofits in those areas, in those zip codes, that would be able to reach the individuals who are in greatest need.
Also, can you share a little bit about the Connector Corps?
Sure. So these are individuals that will be trained through Ohio State, and they will get health community worker training and a certificate as a community worker. They will be individuals from the affected zip code, so you'll have a Linden resident reaching out to their fellow Linden residents, trying to get the pregnant women engaged in medical care and social services. So it's important that they know their neighborhood, because they know the resources that are available there, but they also know the people that live in their neighborhood. And so they'll be trained through Ohio State, and then they'll go out in the community and help identify women who are pregnant and might not be connected to service, and then work with that nonprofit in their area to get them connected to services that that nonprofit provides, or that they have relationships with, and that Columbus Public Health has relationships with, to make sure the women get the needed medical care and social services that they need.
So if there are individuals in our community who will be watching this hearing, and they would like to benefit from some of these resources, who can they contact?
The best thing they can do would be to go to our website. They can visit our website at publichealth.columbus.gov, but they can also call, and the best number for them to call at this point is 311, and they can get the multitude of services, not just that Columbus Public Health offers, but that Celebrate One is offering as well.
Thank you very much. Just appreciate your leadership in this, in this area, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So the next ordinance is Ordinance number 1139-2016, and this is to enter into a contract with Protech Instrument Corporation. The city of Columbus has been awarded a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, for the Lead Safe Columbus Program. Columbus Public Health is a partner in the Lead Safe Columbus Program. Columbus Public Health will employ a successful, successfully demonstrated and recognized lead program that utilizes real-time environmental monitoring techniques to assist tenants and property owners in the city of Columbus to make educated and timely decisions about lead poisoning hazards. The environmental monitoring portion of this program includes testing for lead paint. The ordinance authorizes the Director of Finance and Management -- The ordinance authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Protec Instrument Corporation in the amount of $5,760 for the replacement and installation of the C-57 radioactive sources used in the LPA-1 analyzers. The purpose of the LPA-1 analyzers is to generate on-the-spot lead paint testing reports. Protec Instrument Corporation is the sole manufacturer of the LPA-1 lead analyzer and the accessories.
Thank you very much. It's important to get this award, because we want to make sure that we're, have the ability to test for lead paint, and make sure that our, especially our children, are not having lead paint into their systems, and they do get the proper help, so thank you.
You're welcome. And the next ordinance is ordinance 1154-2016, and this is to accept an appropriate grant from the Franklin County Chemical Preparedness Advisory Council for the Chemical Emergency Preparedness Program, also known as CPAC. Columbus Public Health's Chemical Emergency Preparedness Program has been awarded funds through the Franklin County Chemical Emergency Preparedness Advisory Council, also known as CPAC, for services rendered through 2016. This ordinance will authorize the acceptance of these funds in the appropriation of $71,916. The primary purpose of CPAC is to maintain a database of all the facilities that store or produce chemicals in reportable quantities. Additionally, CPAC's help, helps to promote chemical safety throughout Columbus and Franklin County.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is ordinance 1172-2016, and this is to enter into a contract with KNS Services Incorporated for the security enhancements of our building. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a contract with KNS Services Incorporated for the provision of security equipment upgrades at Columbus Public Health at 240 Parsons Avenue. This equipment is necessary to update and enhance CPH's current system. The new equipment will be compatible with the city's established standards for security systems, and will be linked to the current security system at City Hall. The contract with KNS Services, Inc., is in the amount of $44,093, which includes labor and materials.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have ordinance number 1168-16, to accept and appropriate, appropriate additional funding for the CFHS grant. Columbus Public Health has been awarded additional funding from the Ohio Department of Health for the Child and Family Health Services Grant. The grant period for the Child and Family Health Services Grant program has also been extended to September 30 of 2016. This ordinance is needed to accept the additional funding of $254,475.43 in grant monies and anticipated fee revenues for the Child and Family Health Services Grant program, and to also extend the grant period from July 1 of 2015 through June 30 of 2016 to July 1 of 2015 through September 30 of 2016.
Congratulations on getting this grant for $254,000. And can you share a little bit with our viewing and listening audience as how those dollars will be used?
Yeah, so, this grant does a variety of things. One of the things that the public is probably most aware of is it does do home visiting for expectant and new moms, and so, that's good. And with those home visits, obviously, we talk about safe sleep, and we talk about all the factors that are involved with infant mortality to try to keep that mom and that baby safe.
Thank you, we're excited to get those extra dollars.
Yes, we are too. And the next ordinance is ordinance 1173-2016, is to enter into a contract with cribs for kids. You can see the theme here. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with the cribs for kids for the purchase of portable cribs needed by Columbus Public Health. On average, a baby dies every other week due to an unsafe sleep practice in Franklin County. Columbus Public Health, as recommended by the Greater Columbus Infant Mortality Task Force, has a need to purchase portable cribs to ensure a safe sleep environment for children of Franklin County. The purchase of the portable cribs is also a grant requirement as part of the fiscal year 2016 Child and Family Health Services Program. This purchase order will allow for the purchase of 449 portable cribs. In 2015, 863 portable cribs were distributed to caregivers of infants without a safe sleep surface, so, individuals who did not already have a safe sleep surface in their home.
So, you just mentioned in your conversation, is that, in your testimony, that in 2015, we, 863 portable cribs were distributed, and this grant is for 449 portable cribs. And so, can you share with the viewing and listening audience where the other dollars come from to be able to support the high number of portable cribs?
Correct. So, a portion of the previous legislation for the CFHS extension, some of that money is going to go to buy additional cribs. So, we already had some funds to buy cribs. This will allow us to buy an additional. And in 2016, we intend on going, giving out more than 863 cribs that we gave out in 2015. I couldn't tell you the exact number, because we're not through 2016, but we're prepared to give over 860 in 2016.
Excellent, so...
So, this is additional dollars, basically, from what we've already authorized or legislated.
Wonderful, because we want to make sure that certainly every family that needs a crib has a crib for their child, so that, again, that child can be able to live past their first birthday. Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome. And the next item is ordinance number 1129-2016. This is a revenue contract with the city of Worthington. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a revenue contract with the city of Worthington for the provision of public health services in the amount of $56,746. Section 3709.08 of the Ohio Revised Code permits a city constituting a city health district to enter into a contract with another city constituting a city health district to provide public health services for its citizens. The city of Worthington has elected to enter into a contract with Columbus Public Health in the amount of $56,746 to provide public health services. Under the contract, Worthington reimburses Columbus Public Health for all direct and indirect costs incurred.
Is this a new contract?
No, this has been in effect for 15-plus, 20 years at this point. So this is just a continuation of our previous arrangement that we've had with the city of Worthington.
And are there any specific services that the city of Worthington uses, utilizes with the Columbus Public Health?
Well, we protect all, we inspect their restaurants, all in the city of Worthington, just like we do here in the city of Columbus. We handle all their reportable communicable diseases in the city of Worthington, and we also do other environmental things, like pool inspections, tattoo poler inspections, as well as mosquito control.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And the last ordinance we have this evening is ordinance number 1187-2016, and this is to authorize transfer of funds from Celebrate One Initiative Plan. So, Columbus Public Health has identified a need for additional personnel support for the Celebrate One Initiative Plan to reduce infant mortality. The goal for Celebrate One Initiative Plan is to first have healthy families and neighborhoods. Columbus must implement a strong neighborhood-based strategy. Studies show that the social determinants of health play a big role in our infant mortality crisis. Many activities and resources will be targeted to the highest-risk neighborhoods. These hotspot neighborhoods, by geographic analysis, had infant mortality rates up to three times higher than that of the community overall. The eight neighborhoods comprise less than 10% of Franklin County births, but account for nearly 1 in 4 infant deaths, and 1 in 3 non-white infant deaths in Franklin County. They also had higher rates of poverty, food insecurity, neighborhood crime, unemployment, housing instability, and transportation barriers. These eight hotspots or zones for more intensive work was identified in the plan. This ordinance authorizes and directs the city auditor to provide for the transfer of $125,000 within the Health Special Revenue Fund to properly align appropriation for the need for additional personnel to work with the neighborhood strategies. This ordinance also authorizes the transfer and appropriation of funds to the Department of Development to increase the funding to support a full-time program planner to work with the neighborhood initiatives. So this ordinance allows us to expand the neighborhoods that we plan to reach. So I had mentioned earlier, the near south and south Linden, and also, the near east will be an area that we'll look at, and this would fund two individuals, two staff, a program manager, one that would be housed at Columbus Public Health, as well as a planner for development.
Thank you, and just appreciate all the work that is going on with Celebrate One. I know it's not, I mean, obviously, Columbus Public Health is very much involved in it, but certainly, other departments within the city of Columbus, as well as other nonprofits that are working so that we can ensure that our children live, pass their first birthday and live out their full potential. So, again, thank you and appreciate the work, because, as you mentioned, it isn't just the children, whether they're asleep, not sleeping in a safe environment, there's lots of other issues that are surrounding our families, and we have to be able to work with them and within the neighborhoods to be able to provide them with all the tools that they need to move forward. So, thank you for this.
Thank you, and thank you for your support for this and for all of our legislation.
You're welcome. And so, with that, we are, completes the legislation for the hearings, this legislative hearing, and this legislation will be on either May 2 or May 9. And I hope this hearing has provided really insight into the programs and the community initiatives from Columbus Public Health, as well as the Finance Department, that is necessary to support our ongoing city operations. As residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged in issues that are presented. I'll be holding a hearing tomorrow, which is April 27, at 5:00 p.m. on the capital budget. This hearing will be an opportunity to review important capital improvements from projects that will be funded to maintain and improve our roads, bridges, sewers, parks, buildings, and various infrastructure. Before I conclude this, tonight's hearing, I want to thank the Department of Finance, Fiscal Manager Christopher Long, the Treasurer's Office, City Treasurer Debbie Cle, and Columbus Public Health, the Assistant Health Commissioner and Medical Director, Dr. Mashika Roberts. I also want to always thank my fellow council members and their staffs, who serve our community with pride every day. City Council Legislative Research Office, especially Michael Kessler, who leads the Legislative Research Team, and Andrew Dwyer, who staffs Health and Human Services, and Workforce Development, and Matt Erickson, who staffs the Finance Committee. I also want to thank my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, who really work hard. As you see, we're having a hearing tonight and tomorrow. Appreciate them and the work that they do. And then, of course, the hard-working staff of CTV, who make these hearings possible. I also want to acknowledge in the room Nancy Sully, who is a senior community relations -- what's her last title? Community relations? Senior Community Relations Advisor. So you see her out and about in our communities, representing our city council. I want to thank Nancy for being here. And then, finally, I want to thank the residents of our, of Columbus, who make our city the best place and the country to live, working to raise a family. This hearing is adjourned, and have a great evening.